I'm just checking, has everybody that wants to speak this morning signed our list? So we know how many speakers we have. If you want to speak, we need you to sign in, please. You're good, okay. The judge will probably mention this, but if you have made written comments, we are already processing those comments. I can tell you that some of those comments have been excellent and will probably affect the outcome. So if you've made written comments, you do not need to come up and read through your written comments. We are already working on those and using them to revise what's going to be our final draft. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we will open this Commissioners' Workshop Monday, or February 28, 10:00 a.m. And first item on the agenda is called order. The second is presentation and discussion, revising and updating the current Engineering Design Guidelines by Prathana Banerji, County Engineer.
Hi, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you, everybody, for coming here today.
Speak into the mic, please.
Is that good? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better, much better.
It's hard to tell if you can hear me now, I mean, if you can hear me or not. But if for anybody who doesn't know me, I am Prathana Banerji. I am the county engineer for Brazos County. And we are here to talk about an update to the Brazos County Engineering Design Guidelines. So just, I'm going to keep it fairly short because I want everybody who's here to get a chance to speak and comment on the document. But what we have been noticing historically is that the roadways that have been built in the county are just not something that we can keep up with our maintenance dollars. And we're trying to come up with ways to basically stretch our dollars as far as possible. We all are aware of legislative caps that the county has on taxes, budget constraints, that's everywhere. Everybody goes through, you know, trying to make your money go as far as possible. And that's what we have been struggling. And so I, we recognize that we need a document to be in place to help everybody, and ourselves included, to basically, you know, get a product that everyone here and the county can really be, you know, something that we can not, I'm struggling to find the words because I know there's, you know, pushback on why we are doing this because, you know, we want to, I guess the goal for all of us is to prepare a product that all of us are proud of. We all are serving this community and we all come in with the same intention. And really, at the core of all of this, that is the intention, to come up with a product that we all are proud of and can really maintain and do justice to taxpayer dollars. And so just rewinding back a few years, in 2019 is when we actually came up with the first draft of this document. And that was in effect for up to August of 2021. Essentially, that's when the original Engineering Design Guidelines, that the first version of the document was retracted. And what we have today is always understood as a placeholder document. It's not a complete document. And so from 2021 to today is when we have been really trying to update the original 2019 document. And so an original draft was sent out on 5th of December, 2023, when we update, the new updated document of the original was sent out. We initially had a deadline of till January of 2024, but we heard your comments that you needed, you know, with Christmas and so on and so forth. And that was a very short deadline. And so we extended that deadline to the end of February, which is essentially actually tomorrow. And so that deadline was extended to receive as many comments as we possibly can. I'm just going to quickly highlight what the changes are in this new version than the 2019 version. So there are the three big really points of differentiation between the two documents. One is the text art standards and specifications is what we are employing in this document and not, that was not the case in the original 2019 document. Additionally, to go with that is a sampling and testing guide, basically to show, give a project a frequency on how often and how far and what, so on and so forth, the testing needs to occur. And also, one of the very big changes is that a site-specific pavement design and a geotechnical design, that, geotechnical analysis that supports that pavement design is what we are requiring in this new document. One thing I want to highlight that, you know, everybody is aware of, that we as a county cannot hold any of the subdivision development to a higher standard than what we employ on a road of a similar, you know, category and classification. So all of the changes in this engineering document is what we are already employing in-house or we are actively employing as we speak. And so we are not making a distinction between somebody who is trying to develop or put a project in the county versus what we do in-house for county roads. Quickly, the future action plans, we will not be discussing today, we will not be engaging in a discussion today solely with the purpose of not to be rude or anything. We just want to really use this opportunity to hear anything that you have to say. We are not here to, you know, get into, you know, back and forth because we want to make sure that we listen to what you all have to say. We, the approach is, just so that everybody is aware, we want to make this a cohesive and collaborative document. We want to make sure that, you know, any of those hard-hitting points that you bring up, we are, you know, thinking about it, we are analyzing it, and then we move forward from that. So we are looking to create a document that everybody is comfortable with. We, like Bruce mentioned several times, we have already received several comments till date, and thank you very much for taking the time and, you know, reviewing and giving those comments to us. We really appreciate it. We are going to aggregate all of it. We're going to look at it closely and then we will be updating the document accordingly, depending on all the changes that have already been, you know, asked till date. We are also extending the review date to the end of March because we understand that probably, you know, tomorrow, if somebody wants to take a little more time, you think of something after today that you would like to be addressed in the document, we are extending the time window for the review to the end of March, or essentially the 29th of March is when we will be closing the window for receipt of comments. And we will be putting out another updated final draft of the document sometime in June of 2024. And so I'm just wrapping it up. Again, my contact information is here. You can email me. You can stop by our office, handwritten comments, you can drop them off, you can, you know, email is most easiest for all of us. But whatever method you have to drop off comments, we are here to receive them. You can also drop them off with Karen, our office assistant. So you can, her information is also here. So at this point, I will, you know, basically give this opportunity to anybody who wants to say anything from this point.
And just that review for comment drop-off with your office has moved to March 29?
Yes, the new deadline is March 29. So we are adding another month.
Okay, so you have a list?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Billy Pruitt. My comment basically is, interaction between the county and the local engineers, contractors, suppliers, I'm looking at it from a supplier standpoint, reading through the specs or the proposed draft. There's a lot of things in there that we can't do because it's not feasible, and we've already noted that in an email. And so it's already been looked at, and I understand that. Our biggest thing is input. We want to have input in it because in the end of the day, we've got to supply the county with that material or product that y'all are requiring. And so we want to make sure that we can achieve that goal. And so being able to have input is, from my standpoint, is very important. But as far as comments, we've made those, so I'm not going to make those again. But that's where we would like to go with this, and we would like to help in the process so that the, this can be a complete spec that people can follow, suppliers, contractors, and engineers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Billy.
Bill LeRue.
Judge, I wanted to speak down to the public comment section. I don't know if it's appropriate to do it here, or are you going to?
I mean, you can do either one if you...
I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer.
Oh, I see. I see. Now I understand why you're commenting. Well, we can do the public comment. That's probably because we were going to try to stick to the engineers in this, but I will call on you when we get to the public comment. That'll work, Bill. Thank you. Is it Ben Webb? Ben Wall?
Howdy, my name is Benjamin Wall, professional engineer, work for TexCon General Contractors. Mainly, what I would like to see...
Could you talk into the microphone, please?
I apologize. Mainly, what I would like to see in the document is a need for clarity. You, there are several instances in the document where it's kind of left up to staff's interpretation. And what I would, what is needed, so I can do my job, is that it's written black and white. It's, it should be very easy to read, to understand, and... Anyway, that's basically what I had, was the need for clarity. When you, when you read through it, look through it as you would see a contractor or engineer read through it, so that it is black and white, we can, a good product.
So have you made some comments?
Yes, sir, I have made comments.
Written comments?
Yes, sir.
That address that, okay.
All right, thank you.
Spencer Buchanan?
I'm here. I'm not an engineer, do you want me to wait for public comment?
Probably, we'll do that. Thanks, Spencer. Devin Doian?
Devin Doian with Schultz Engineering. Just to reiterate what some of the other people have already said, I think this is a pretty complex document. And as a group, we feel like, written comments is one thing, but some of these issues need a meeting to discuss through these issues and to clarify some of the things in the document. So I think we're asking for, yes, we've given you our comments, but we would like to have some workshop meetings to talk through those comments because they're pretty complicated in some instances. And it's hard to write all that down on a written comment. And some of these things, we made me misinterpreting what's written in the rules, and it's a lot easier to have that conversation in a meeting setting than just writing open, you know, written comments. So that, that's my take on it. We, I think from my standpoint, I'd like to work with y'all and make sure, like Ben said, I'm going to be an engineer that's designing these roads, and it would be beneficial to me if I know everything that y'all are looking for and it's pretty clearly laid out so that we're not having, you know, arguments when we're in the process of designing a subdivision or a road, and we're trying to work that out then on interpretations of what's written in the rules. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. So now we'll go back up to, that's all that I've got besides the two of y'all. So I don't know whether there was anybody else that might, an engineer that wanted to speak, come up.
I came in kind of late, I probably got on the next sheet, but Jeff Robertson, McLaurin Brown Engineering. I submitted comments as well, so I won't, I won't go through my comments, but I'd just like to reiterate what Devin and some others said, that, yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to provide input, but I think it's, it's more than just so, you know, this one workshop. I think there needs to be a panel or some discussion group with the technical people and suppliers and everybody else to kind of get into the weeds with, you know, our concerns. So, you know, I think ultimately, we all have the same goal. We want to provide good roads, good drainage, good utilities for the county, for the residents, for everything we're building. Because, you know, we're putting our name on that too, so we, we have a vested interest to all work correctly. So I think we would just like to have an opportunity to go through in more detail, make sure there is black and white clarity as far as what, what we're expected to do and what the process is from purchasing a piece of property all the way to selling the house, so that if, there's no hiccups along the way that developers, engineers, home builders, everybody knows exactly what we're getting into. So anyway, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any other engineer that came in late that didn't sign in that wants to speak? Okay. Bill?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, appreciate, really appreciate you doing this. Nancy, I know you helped us a bunch, you listened, and helped us a bunch with getting this set up this morning. I'm not a civil engineer, not licensed, so I'm not qualified to get into all the technical stuff. What I want to just talk to you a little bit about was policy. You know, this is what we're talking about. It's the Brazos County Engineering Design Guidelines. When I look at that, what that is, that's a real fancy word, or fancy way of saying, rules and regulations. They're not just guidelines, they're our rules and regulations. And, you know, in today's, in a lot of conservative circles, that's not real popular with folks, and that's, I think, why we're here, adding more rules and regulations. And I assure you, we have plenty of rules and regulations. We have, we're out here, it'll take us six months to do the construction on a small job, and then it takes us another six months to work through all the inspections, punch lists, rules and regulations, just to get them in compliance with the standards. So from my perspective, we have plenty now. And obviously, what rules and regulations do is they slow the process down, they cost us more money. I remember just last month, I was at the Chamber Commerce Economic Development Forum, Dr. Gaines was there. One of the problems with our housing crisis right now is that we're over-regulated. You know, it just, when you add more time, more cost to a project, obviously, it's going to hamper your supply of housing and cause affordability issues and, and cause inflation, all these things that you hear about. And so, you know, I, I see that, and I, I'm not sure that this has been quantified to the extent maybe we would like to see it quantified. One of the reasons that we hear that, this morning that I heard that we want to do this is that the road sections and construction and the standards that we're building, we're not generating, didn't say it quite like this, but there's not been enough revenue generated to maintain those. I personally don't see that. I would, I would like to do a little study of that, I never have, but, you know, we're develop, well, there's several developers here, and of course contractors, we all fit in the same categories. But we do a lot of other things, too, not just to constantly be under more regulations and, and more rules. I mean, one of the first things we have to do when we go out here is, we're taking this ag land and we're putting it into a productive use, and we're paying three years of rollback taxes plus interest. So there's this immediate bump to the county that you're, you're getting to help offset if there's any of these costs we're talking about. We have to donate valuable land along the right-of-ways. Anytime we abut a county road, if there's some idea of future expansion or it doesn't meet the county, current county widths, we're having to donate lots of valuable land that we've bought. So some, somewhere down the road, you don't have to buy it, it's already been cleaned, cleared, and donated. A lot of these subdivisions, a lot of these areas, we're having to go out and upgrade the water lines. And I'm talking about to significant cost and to significant sizing, which is bringing better service, not just to our little subdivisions that we're doing, but to the whole area. It upgrades people's pressure, it upgrades their quantities, and a big thing that comes with that is fire protection. I know, and if we're in the ETJ, we're having to bring sufficient water to set fire hydrants and, you know, at the, all the appropriate locations. So we're bringing a lot of fire protection to people. Today, to have marketable lots anywhere, we all know, you've got to have some sort of high-speed internet. We are spending tremendous amounts of money, bringing high-speed internets, jumping over, in a lot of cases, existing rural development, we're having to pay to bring it out in these rural areas. And then everybody along the way, which is great, that's the way it works, I'm glad, they just get to tap into it. So, you know, we're, we're, there's a lot of other good things that are coming along. We're not building substandard roads, I don't think, and we're not causing the county problems. Actually, the tax dollars that are coming today to these rural subdivisions with the price of land, with the price of development, and, and all the regulations, these houses probably a minimum, there's other in the rooms, more, Travis can speak more to it than I can, you know, almost an entry level in these subdivisions are $600,000 to $1 million. And so, you know, this is the type of citizens that are contributing to the county. We've all worked hard over the years to create this high-quality economic development that we now have in Brazos County. And I want Brazos County to be able to take advantage of it. And I'm concerned, when I really look around, what's happening is, we're getting our costs so high that we're pushing it out into these other counties, and they are the ones getting to take advantage of the, all the hard work we've done. They drive in, they use our parks, they use our libraries, they, they use all of our systems and, and they pay taxes somewhere else. So I'm just asking you to please, as we work through this, be mindful that we're not just adding more regulations for the, because it's the new thing or a buzzword of the day or something, that it's just something that we really need when, when we do this. And anyone that we do is not too onerous on contractors, developers, and increase the cost to the homeowner down the, you know, everybody has to pass it on. So anyway, thank you again for your time. Appreciate, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Hello, and thank you for having us. My name's Spencer. Every day, I'm involved in the design requirements and the subdivision regulations. And I think that, you know, from what I've seen, the biggest issue and the biggest hurdle is we don't know where the county is coming from on certain issues. And it affects the different areas of development. You know, a good example would be for developers, how do they know what to pay for land if they don't know what their cost is going to be to develop that land? There's a lot of changes being implemented right now. A good example would be the geotech testing in, in special road design on the pavement because the developers right now, if they get attracted land under a contract, they don't have enough time and feasibility to do a geotech study and to do an asphalt design. So, you know, if, if, if they're trying to purchase land, they don't know what they can pay for it because they don't know what the road's going to cost. If there's a way that we could all meet as a group and have developers and have engineers and have CMT and have surveyors and have everybody in the room together, we can figure out what the issue is the county has and come up with solutions for it. If, you know, for example, on this geotech portion, if there's a way that, that developers could go in and get some samples of the dirt and say, okay, we've got a PI of this amount, this is what the road's going to look like, well, then they can proceed on with the development. But right now, they're, they're kind of blind moving forward. And the same with engineers. If engineers are supposed to have a set, you know, group of requirements that they're designing by, and now it's changing, well, they don't know what their costs are going to be. And they don't know what the, you know, not only the design cost, but the cost of construction to complete it. Because all of this starts with getting land under contract, getting preliminary cost estimates from the engineers, and putting a pro forma together to see if development can even happen. You know, moving down the line, there's more testing that's involved. There's been CMT labs in town that have expressed their concerns. My request is that we get everybody together in several meetings, we figure out what the issues are, and we come up as a group and address each one of those issues. I think we had 62 comments, just, you know, on our side. I know there's a whole lot more, but, you know, at the end of the day, if there's going to be changes that are this significant, I'd like for everybody to be able to be involved. I'm not sure that, that providing however many comments y'all received, I don't know. And then y'all addressing them and then, you know, sending them out at the end is really teamwork, you know? How do we tackle this as a team? I don't think that, you know, somebody's sending comments and then, you know, some getting addressing in certain ways is the way to do it. I feel like we should actually talk these things out. Okay, the county, what, what issues are y'all having? Are they in the subdivisions or are they in the collector roads that go to the subdivisions? If it's the subdivisions, what, what caused that issue? If it's the collector roads, what caused that issue? I think that we could have a more meaningful approach if we did this in several group settings. And maybe we've got representatives from, you know, the developer side, from the engineer side, from the survey side, from the, the lab testing side. And maybe it's a panel that acts in a sense to where we don't have a big group setting and they can speak on behalf. But at the end of the day, I think everybody needs to work together on it. I think there needs to be compromises, but I think we really need to hear where y'all are coming from on certain instances, so then everybody can say, oh, well, we, we really do see the issue now, here's how we can all contribute to make it better. So, anyway, thank you for your time. Spencer Buchanan.
All right. Anybody on the court?
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming. And it seems to me that the next step is to have workshops with the developers and the, the engineers and the surveyors and the lab testing people, whether that's a collective one meeting or separate meetings, I don't know. But this is just the first step, it seems to me, and we need to have design regulations that are clear and not open to interpretation. So I look forward to those meetings being held.
Yeah, I would second that. It might add some time from the guideline that we originally kind of went through with Pratana, but having that, that collaboration, those meetings where we can work with the professionals in the community that are here today, they've, they've put in their comments, but I do think some back and forth would be needed more so than just looking at those comments and then moving forward. You know, I thought some great points were made to that, and several of them redundant, where different people were all seeing the same thing, maybe some collaborations, some meetings, talk through, and, and go back from there, go forward from there.
I just wanted to, I received a phone call yesterday. I don't know that the comments that were made to me were made in writing, but I think they were pertinent to especially what Mr. Buchanan just said. And their suggestion was potentially to address the problem of, I'm going to buy this piece of property, and until the geotech is done, I don't know whether my road is going to be, you know, this kind of road or this kind of road. His suggestion was that with the soil maps and the information we have from A&amp;M about our county, that we could divide the county into quadrants and then assign road specifications for the different quadrants of the county based on the kinds of soil that are inside that quadrant. I thought that was a good suggestion, I just wanted to make sure it was part of the record.
Sure, yeah. And I mean, the problem with that is that the soil sample map probably looks like a bangled tiger stripe. I mean, it's so much more complex than, than, than easy quadrants, but yeah, good, good input. Thank you, Bruce.
And I think what I'm hearing is, if we can come together as a group, you need to be able to brainstorm. Brainstorming is a way to help because then everybody sort of knows there's not, it's not left up to interpretation and assumptions. And so coming from higher education...
And so, coming from higher education, I like the idea of having everybody in the room, somebody brings up an idea, they're able to explain it in a way that maybe informs somebody in a way that they didn't know. And of course, I don't know anything about road and bridges, so just kind of being in the room, hearing what you all are talking about, and understanding. But I do believe that a good brainstorming, maybe not even just one, but a good brainstorming session, where all of the players are in the room, and we're all kind of trying to understand what you all are up against, what you all deal with, and then, you know, dealing with the county, and they understand, you know, the nuances of what you all are dealing with. So I think the possibility of brainstorming sessions would be a way to get us all on the same page, or at least understand it in a way where you all don't maybe feel where you're overregulated, but we're doing it in a way that is beneficial. And, and there is compromise, because not everybody's going to get everything they want. But there, there's a way to try to nuance it in a way where there's some balance in there, and we do the best that we can, and that it is a benefit to everybody in Brazos County. Brazos County. Did I say it right?
I mean, it was all right. You're getting there.
Brazos County. I'm from West Texas, so I say Brazos County. So, those are my comments.
I'd have some, just some questions, and it will help me out.
Steve, speak.
Quite some time ago, we had talked about the escalating cost of maintenance of existing roads that we have in our system. And, refresh my memory real quick, our annual road maintenance budget is about what now?
It's about 4.7, 4.8 million. And it's been that way for several, several, for at least the time I have been here, it's been the exact same number. And it has not increased. The capital side has, but not the maintenance side has remained the exact same number for several, several years.
Okay. And then, we had talked about, a, you researching and coming back to us, when you brought that up, as a concern going forward, that that cost was going to continue to escalate, and it would put some difficulty on us. But we talked about researching, like a lot of counties have, special, special road tax? Have we ever come up with anything, as far as what those, I mean, as a financial guy, I like a revenue stream dedicated to an expense, and a matching of those. And I think that the concerns that you brought up on the legislative cap on county taxes and budget constraints, I, I just really wanted, have we gotten anywhere on looking into and evaluating a specialty road tax?
No, the answer is no, and because I've, I don't know what, how comfortable the court is on, you know, a topic like that, so it's not something that I ventured out. I can, if there's agreement, for us to look into a different revenue stream for maintaining roads. I can definitely look into that, and probably look into what some of the other counties are already, you know, engaging in. For example, actually, one of the things that other, and I know it's not popular with this court, a lot of other counties are actually engaging in not taking any more developed, developed subdivision roads into the county system, because there is a legislative cap on taxes that counties can incur. And I, I understand that, you know, developed, developed land provides, you know, revenue, but it doesn't really trickle down to our side as much as we would like it to be. Again, that's not a, you know, discussion for today, that's not my expertise, but that's just a, you know, one cent that I would like to provide on that topic. But, I mean, if that is something that the court would be interested in, I can look into, you know, what other counties are doing in terms of innovative ways of coming up with maintenance dollars for their infrastructure.
Well, I, I, I would appreciate that, because if we bring it up as an area of concern in our presentation, we need to, I think, research ways that we can, if there are other ways to take the county taxes, budget constraints, and stretching taxpayer dollars out of the equation, and we can do it with a dedicated fee. Because I, I understand, one part is, is develop a road that's a standard, okay, that we want, but then, the other one is, is that has an impact on our future costs. And there may be some ways to look at that there. And then, I had a question, why was it that the document was retracted in 2021?
So, when we went through this process in 2019, and I'm not shrugging responsibility, but I was not the original person who came up with the first, first version of that document. And so, this process that we are doing, we are engaging in today, that process was completely skipped at that point. And so, I guess, the community at large felt that they were not engaged, and there was a document that was put in place without consent, and without, you know, input of anybody. And so, that's the reason why that original document was kind of retracted in 2021, because we, we started getting the feedback that a lot of people were not engaged, and did not have the, this very opportunity to, you know, give comments, or have a platform to provide concerns, or whatever it is, you know, this process was like completely skipped at that point. So, we're trying to do it the right way, and whatever the court decides that you think is the right way for us to approach it this time, because, like I said, and I'm emphasizing again, we want to make sure that the, you know, the document is cohesive, and it's a collaborative document. That is really our goal. And that's really my approach this time, that we want to do it right, with the community engaged, and, you know, being able to provide their inputs, and not feel isolated.
I think that's great, and I really appreciate everybody being here, because in my, I guess, the way I look at things is, is this is the way things are supposed to work.
Right.
And, and so, I appreciate everybody being here and their comments, and I also appreciate that we are at this point, after we've had some kind of fits and starts, and we need to get to this point. So thank you, and thank all of y'all for being here. And then, relative to, I've, I've had some conversations with a number of developers, particularly not as much engineers, but their questions were, how does this compare to Techstart? How does this compare to cities, other cities? How does this compare to other counties? Because we have a lot of developers that do development, not just in Brazos County, and they're looking at things, where they're saying, oh, you know, maybe I ought to do my development in Burleson County, or I might ought to do it in Grimes County, or I ought to do it somewhere else. And we do have to have a, we don't want to enact things that would stifle the appropriate type of development that we want to take place.
Absolutely.
And, so, I, I'd like to really know how we are, how we fit into the context on a comparative basis.
Yeah.
Because that's questions that I've heard, and you, you don't know it off, I mean, I'm not expecting you to give me an answer offhand.
No, I can give you like a little short, like answer, a concise one. The thing is, we try to come up with a standard that really fits us, instead of just picking something that this, and we looked at that comment as well, you know, where the concern was, why aren't we just using the BCS United? And there, there are things that in the BCS United, they, they cater essentially to the cities, you know, they are the ones that come up with it, it is very tailored to their needs. And so, we were, we were struggling to find a standard, really, that works for us better, than just the BCS United guidelines. And so, we thought that the Techstart standards and specifications were more suited to what we have, because Techstart, as you all are aware, they work through rural areas, they work through very, very urban Houston, Travis County, like, you know, so they have covered all of the state, and they have already basically invented the wheel. We do not want to go back and like come up with standard that really worked for us, where we already have an agency who's done all the research, who's already put in the money and effort, and to figure out that this really works in all throughout, you know, the state, doesn't matter how rural, or how urban, or whatnot. So, we thought that the Techstart standards and specification were more suited to us. And that's why we came up with a sampling and testing guide to go along with it, because, well, Techstart is building hundreds of, you know, miles of road at a time. We don't do that. And so, that is the reason we came up with a testing guideline, that basically kind of caters the frequencies of those testing to our needs. And not just, you know, we don't pick up, because Techstart will be testing something miles apart. Well, our whole road is less than a mile, so basically, we cannot just test it at one location, and then not for the entire, you know, length of the road. So that's why we came up with, that was the thinking of coming up with a sampling and testing guide. And so...
So, we've taken their wheel, but we've really adapted it for the purposes.
Right.
Because, I mean, the, the traffic counts on Techstart roads.
Right, right.
Compared to what we're looking at here, is, there's a huge difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and so, we've modified, in, in, in the guidelines, we've modified those for vehicle weights, and, and number of trips, and all those types of things.
Yeah, and that's the reason we are talking about the site-specific geotechnical test and pavement design, because then, that really addresses to your concern, where we come up with a pavement design that is site-specific, because it suits not a Techstart highway, that's not what you're, what you're building for 200, you know, lot subdivision road, that's not what you're building. But that's why you come up with that specific road design for your, you know, subdivision, that caters to that, you know, that location, and that traffic, and soil, you know, analysis, and so on, and so forth.
Right. Okay, the other one, maybe for Bruce, is, I may have missed it, and I apologize, but I don't have the written comments.
Oh, we haven't distributed those yet, but we can, we, we have collected all of them, and we are collecting, if, after today, if anybody has any more, we're continuing to collect, and I can share that with the court, that's not a problem.
I don't know about everybody else, but I think that that would be pertinent for me, helping to make the decision.
Yeah, no, we, I haven't shared it with anybody, but we have it in-house, in our, we can share it with the court. Yes, absolutely.
I think, for me, I don't know about everybody else, but for me, that would be something I would want to be able to look at and review. And so, with that request, and then, you know, one of the, one of the things that's been mentioned to me is, is, and I think it fits with some of the stuff I'm hearing here, is, is that we have, because conditions change, development costs change. I mean, my goodness, Senate Bill 2038, and what that has about being able to no longer be in an ETJ, and be able to just petition out of it, that, that changes the landscape quite a bit, and it reduces some regulatory and, and fees, and delays, and things from municipalities, who are, who have jurisdiction in areas that they're never going to annex and put into a city, into their city. But, but the context is always changing, you know what I mean? And, and development's going to take place in a whole different way, as these come up. And the suggestion that I thought had some merit was, is that there be a Road and Bridge Advisory Committee, and it combined engineers, developers, other people that would be appropriate, and staff. And I would, I would like to see if that's something, maybe, that we can work out, to where we're not just getting things now, but we have a pathway into the future, as things change. That was a thought that came to me, and I thought, you know, this makes, makes a lot of sense. If we set up a process to deal with things, as opposed to just, hey, this is a hot potato, hey, this is a hot potato, hey, this has changed, and now it's a hot potato, we have an ongoing process, where we have the interrelationship between business people and our regulatory, and I just, I think that's a win-win situation for everybody. Because businesses don't see things the same way as we, that we do. And it's good for us to let them know what our concerns are, and it's good for them to let us know what their concerns are. And if, if that's a process that we can put in place, without it being too burdensome, I think that has a lot of merit to it.
So I think, probably, the, what's been suggested, the discussion between the engineering staff out at Road and Bridge, and, you know, developers and engineers, I mean, you've gotten their written comments, and, and maybe before we actually implement that into a written document, maybe there is some clarification, and they may be look, reading something, and maybe it's a misinterpretation. Anything we can clear up, I think is a good idea.
Absolutely.
And, and the, I mean, I, I do think we need regulations, so that everybody understands, here's what the rules are.
Right.
And I hear that from some, you know, that's what they want, and that's what they expect, is to know what they're going to have to build out there, so they can estimate, you know, jobs, you know, based on what our rules are. So, all those discussions need to happen, probably before we come up with, you know, a final.
Final draft.
So, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, we might, we might need to be open to June not being the finish date for this, because with the collaboration from the professionals that are here, and maybe those that aren't here, one of the thing, I want us to all just be real careful of is, when we, when we adopt guidelines, if there are projects presently moving forward, I would hate for them to then, all of a sudden, have new guidelines on the project, you know, move in the goalposts, so to speak. And I'm not inferring that you or any of your team want to do that, but I would just want us to make sure that, and it's, in speaking with the developer previously, he, he told me, it feels like sometimes, goalposts are being moved. So I think us coming together with the professionals, and having that collaboration, where everyone agrees, here's the, here's the thing, I like what Jeff said, a same goal.
Right.
We all have that same goal, and then there aren't any surprises, because I'd, I'd hate for people to say, you know, Brazos County's too hard to work with, or, or develop in, but at the same time, that we have a great product for, for the citizens, and we're not going back and spending a lot of money maintaining, because maybe we didn't have shared expectations of what those refined goals were.
Right.
So, I love that, I love that we're going down the track to go there. I would like us to just maybe tap the brakes, and make sure we get that collaboration, and before we go too far.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And one thing I want to say, before we wrap up, that the comments that we have received till date, and we, I'll be happy to share it with the court, they have really been very constructive, a lot of them have actually helped us look at our document, because what happens, we are looking at it, as has been pointed out, from a different perspective. When we get comments from the, you know, the end user, in this case, I mean, it's really, there are things that we, we absolutely agree, but it's just because we are working with it all the time, we look at it in a different way, and that's why I really appreciate that people have actually taken the time to, you know, look at it, and, you know, analyze, and give us those comments, very constructive, some of them, we really appreciate that. So, we can keep the process going, and to a point where, you know, we, both the sides will have to make compromise, at, but what we are comfortable doing is something that we need to agree on, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Prozna, thank you for being willing to come in and share this, and I appreciate everybody that came in, and with the discussion. I, I think now, you will take those written comments, and then, you may need to reach out to, with either developers or the engineers, in trying to see where we can clear up things, and make sure we come up with a document that we can all live with.
Right, absolutely.
And some of those may be back and forth, meetings, collaboration sessions.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with that.
Will we be provided with contact information for everyone who spoke, and everyone who attended today?
I get, I think I have everybody's.
Well, I know everybody signs up on the list, and then we sign up for people who are there, but I think it would be beneficial, for my purpose, that I had their contact information.
Yeah, I think you can provide that.
I mean, it's a public record, if, if whatever we've recorded, so, there's, you've entered the arena where there's no privacy on these things, so.
We shouldn't, should I do this, or?
I guess anybody that wants to put their contact information on, fill it out.
Yeah, I mean, if you think that would be helpful, and, and Judge, what I'm really thinking about, too, is, is not just have meetings all the way along, is, is in process, Deming, in, in organization management, Deming would refer to this as a quality circle, if you're familiar with the concept of a quality circle. And, and a quality circle is how organizations work to stay continually up to date on issues like this. And I'm really thinking more of a, let's not just meet and talk about, and get these hammered out, is, is let's set up a process, if we can do that, for in the future, as legislation changes, to where we've got this interactive... we've got this interactive exchange of ideas. I think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming, and appreciate everyone's input. And this is a process, and so we will, we will get it straightened out and hopefully get most everybody satisfied.
Okay. Next items to adjourn. Thank you.